Hi, everybody. This is loud, okay. My name is Gina Galanu. I'm the student body president here at JCCC. And if you don't know what this is, this is the town hall for the smoking ban. We're sort of holding a discussion to see what it is all about, how it started, and to hear your comments and concerns, and maybe answer any questions that you might have. I'll go right ahead and start by introducing everybody here. I'll start by Dr. Day. And you can say a little bit about yourselves and what you do here in the college. Sounds good? Oh, you have a mic, okay.
Hi there. Dennis Day, Vice President for Student Success and Engagement. And I've been here for 27 years and have worked with students all the time.
I'm Pam Basser. I'm the Assistant Dean for Student Life and Leadership, and I've been here 23 years.
Hi, my name's Dana Grove. I have the unwieldy title of Executive Vice President of Educational Planning and Development, Chief Operating Officer, Johnson County Community College.[69.23][69.23](Laughter). I've been here seven years. I'm office in the Presidential Suite. And I also teach an evening class occasionally.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start off by having a brief history of how this smoking ban started, so that we're all on the same page and we know how it was enforced and how it started. So who would like to provide us with the history?
Let me start with about five or six years ago, the state of Kansas changed the laws in the state of Kansas and said that in public buildings, they're not, we can't have any smoking within 10 or 12 feet of a window or any open, opening of a building, a public building. So the college, Johnson County Community College, chose to start working on a policy that would comply with the state statute. That first rendition was that we created designated areas on the campus so that students could go to those designated areas, student staff and faculty could go to those designated areas, and they were at least 35 feet away from the entrances. And that's how we got started with the policy on smoking on campus. That lasted awhile, and what was happening is the enforcement was a little tough, as you might imagine, because people were breaking out of those designated areas and walking around campus, smoking anyway. Now, let me go back just a little further back. The other part of it, it was not necessarily the state statute, but we also had students that had medical conditions, that smoking affected, and particularly their asthma. When you have certain types of asthma, it really affects you if you have smoke around you. And if there's smoke at the entrances or near the entrances, it was bothering those students. So that really was the genesis for the real concern we have for the health and safety of certain students, and then complying with the state statute. So based on the designated smoking areas that we had, and we had about, I want to say about 15 of them around the campus, the enforcement was getting lax, and it, a lot of smokers just were not complying with that, and it was getting a little contentious with some that didn't want to comply. And we certainly understand that. They wanted to be able to smoke where they wanted to smoke, but it was affecting other people on the campus as well. So then we moved forward after a few years of trying that, and we've gone to now the tobacco-free campus, where we've got a couple of smoking areas up by ATB Building. You can smoke in your car and the parking lots, but otherwise, it's a tobacco-free campus.
Yeah, I inherited this issue maybe two and a half, three years ago. And at that time, which would have been two years, or three years ago, the Student Senate began discussing this issue. A couple of years ago, the Student Senate took up the issue again and did a vote. And I was just asking Pam, and Dennis, maybe you, I don't exactly know what the results of that vote were as far as percentages were concerned, but it was pretty overwhelming. It seems like it was at least two to one, if not three to one, or four to one in vote. And they took the results of that vote to our Board of Trustees. And the Board of Trustees is the group that sets policy here on campus. Last year, the Student Senate was very resolute to try to get a policy established which would ban tobacco on campus. And once again, through the administration, that was taken up to the Board of Trustees, and last May, the Board of Trustees did vote to make this a tobacco-free campus. So that's the history behind it, and that's how it came about, as it stands today. Pam?
I think you guys have said it all.
All right, thank you. I will ask that if you have any questions or comments at any point during this, please raise your hand, you will address the comments. Before we started this panel here, we had a few comments sent to us via email, and I would like to share some thoughts from your classmates and fellow JCCC students. It says that, this person says that while I think the policy is working to a degree, I feel very strongly that it should not only include the entire campus, but its parking garages as well. I was hoping that if enough voiced the idea, it could be adopted into the latest iteration of the college smoking policy. Thank you very much, and please consider this a topic of discussion at your February 15th meeting. And also, they ask if the Student Senate will report the discussion to the Board of Trustees. We will let them know that we did hold the town hall, and if any information on concerns are expressed through this, we will make sure to let them know. So that's, that's a general idea. Is there a comment you would like to add?
Yeah, absolutely. As I understand the question here, the person wants the ban to be expanded into the parking garages, and it is. There is not supposed to be any smoking in the parking garages. The only place where you could do that is if you were in your car in the parking garage. And we do recognize that that is a problematic area, especially in the stairwells of those parking garages. And I have asked the police force to step up surveillance in those particular areas. I do want to address something else in here that's always, I say, you know, the tobacco-free campus ban with an asterisk behind it, because we do have the huts that are located over in the, I think it's the ITC Building, Dennis. And I'm going to try to explain that. We have a very long, 30-year-plus, complicated, but very rewarding relationship with the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad, BNSF Railroad. And they are located over in the ITC Building. They're, you know, a separate operation, they're their own for-profit organization. We have both benefited from the relationship, but more than that, the county of Johnson County, the economy and the business people in Johnson County have benefited immensely. What goes on over there is that BNSF employees from across the country are called in for training and retraining. And in doing that, they will stay here anywhere from two weeks to two months. And in order to do that, they have to rent out hotel rooms, they have to go to restaurants here, they have to go to grocery stores here. We did an economic impact study of that a few years back, and we found out that that brings into the economy of Johnson County alone $30 to $50 million. So the real winners are the Johnson County taxpayers, the Johnson County businesses, and the Johnson County economy. When we were discussing this tobacco ban, for the sake of those people who are coming in, are not students on campus, they're, the BNSF employees who are brought in to be retrained, asked if we would allow them to have smoking huts over in that area. And because of this very long relationship that we had, we, I might say for myself, reluctantly agreed to do that. Sometimes I have second thoughts about that, but we did because of the relationship and because of how it benefits Johnson County. So that's my long explanation for that asterisk beside the tobacco-free campus.
Let me add a little bit to that, too, is, one, the smoking huts that they put at their expense, they put near the buildings, and those folks that do come are here from eight to nine hours a day, and they're employees of Burlington Northern, so it was an accommodation to allow them, because they didn't have their own transportation. They are bussed over here and then bussed back to their hotels at the end of the day or night.
On the same note, there's another comment. It kind of goes along with what you said, but this is a smoker. It says, "I'm a smoker at JCCC. I can understand the logic of the ban, but it would be nice to have more than one smoking areas. A mile away from those two buildings on campus, I think it would, it would still be reasonable to have two more evenly distributed huts on campus. It's tough to get to your car and back within a 10-minute break. For example, I have a two, three, I have two three-hour classes back-to-back with a 15-minute break in between. If I didn't have to go as far to smoke, I wouldn't have to run. That would be nice."
Okay, I want to make this very clear to everybody. What the Board of Trustees voted on last spring was to have a tobacco-free campus. You can't have a tobacco-free campus that makes allowances to smokers by having more smoking huts. That doesn't make any sense. That's a contradiction in terms. We have a tobacco-free campus, we make allowances for it in the automobiles, and again, the shed that the BNSF Railroad maintains over there. But our policy says that we have a tobacco-free campus, so no to those extra huts.
Yes, there's a comment?
I gotta get to class, but I want to make the comment. I'm a smoker, pack-a-day smoker. I'm a pack-a-day smoker, and I follow the rules. You make the rules, that is your prerogative, I pay to be here, you let me be here, I follow the rules. You hit on the very problem that I think got glazed over when you first said when they had the smoking areas, that nobody was following the rules. Well, why is that? Lax enforcement. Anytime you make a rule and you do not enforce it, it becomes a farce, and therefore, the second rule you make becomes an even bigger joke, because who, we all know people smoke on this campus. Every department has a secret smoking area that the teachers and the staff overlook and let people smoke there. I don't smoke in there. But this is, it turns everything you've tried to do into a big joke. Work on the enforcement. If you make rules, enforce them, and people will respect that. And I think that's really where the issue, we've got a lot of incongruities going on. You're talking about the incongruity with the allowing the smoking, and that's smoking-free campus. That's essentially what happens now. And if the teachers and the staff and the security enforcement kind of just walking by, it's essentially what happens now. You know, we all like to think of that's the way it should be, but it's not. So I want you to consider making enforcement a priority. You know, put a fine to it that we can pay for things with.
Yeah, and thank you for that comment. First of all, I want to compliment you for being a smoker and adhering to the rules. That's extraordinary. And I'm going to applaud you for that. Thank you. As far as enforcement is concerned, we do enforce it. We can't blanket the campus with police officers looking for smokers. The analogy that I always draw is the analogy to speed limits, you know? I mean, how many times a day are speed limits broken? All the time. You know, sometimes people are caught, but frequently, it's broken. However, I'm going to say that, however, I've been very impressed with the few number of smokers that I do encounter on campus. I think that the trash from cigarette butts has been reduced, I would say, 95 to 98 percent. And that's, that's really a benefit of this tobacco-free ban, I think. Do either one of you want to comment on that?
Yeah, one, there is a fine. You get a ticket, and there is a fine for enforcement. The other part is that if anybody sees or knows of those secret locations, my email is dday@jcc.edu, and I'll, I'll pass it on. Okay?
We have one more comment right here.
I am a smoker, and I go and sit with people that smoke in these secret smoking areas. And the security guards will walk by, and if they see more than three people smoking, they won't say anything. Choose not to say anything, because there are so many of us. It doesn't matter that you guys have the enforcement, it doesn't matter that there's a fine involved. The security guards choose not to enforce it, even if they see it. They'll give a warning, and some students get 13 warnings before anything happens.
Thank you for that. We have members of our police department here right now, and they've heard that, and I will follow up with that. Thank you very much. Again, that, that would be, you know, an improper enforcement of the policy. Yeah.
I, I just got back from a semester and a half break. I had to unfortunately drop out. But I came back to a smoking ban on this campus. Yes, I'm a smoker. I was very unhappy about it, especially because I was one of the smokers that would sit in the designated smoking areas and use the ashtrays. I mean, I could understand, I've actually talked to the people who have cleaned up the cigarette butts, and they said, you know, it, it can hurt our machines, you know, the machines that, you know, clean up the leaves. And they're like, it's really unsanitary. I'm like, what, my question to you guys really is, did you think about keeping the designated smoking areas on the campus, but more enforcing if you, if a police officer catches somebody smoking outside of the designated smoking area, maybe finding them for that versus taking away smoking altogether? It kind of like an alternative plan, but will still allow the student body of the smokers that, you know, that they would maybe stay in the designated smoking areas? It would overall appease this uproar that's been coming on, because this, I can tell you, is nothing compared to how many of the student body I have talked to that is very angry about the, you know, smoking ban, but they're in class or they didn't want to come because they didn't feel like it was worth their time to come, because they feel that it's just done. You guys won't take it into consideration of maybe enforcing being outside, having the police officers enforce the law outside of the designated smoking areas versus just banning it all.
Yeah, we did take that into consideration. We did a lot of research with other schools on how it, how the transition has occurred at different institutions. And we did talk about possibly reducing the number of smoking areas and trying to do stronger enforcement, and literally, it gets down to the enforcement. The comments that you've had about a tobacco-free campus, other than one location and cars, and enforcement's hard enough as it is, anytime you throw in other areas, it's going to get even more difficult, and there's going to be more complaints, and there's going to be people walking around again from one smoking area to the another, and they're saying, "Well, I'm just going from one to the other." And, but you should put out your cigarette and not throw it on the ground. But that just didn't work. And that's what we found from the other institutions that we talked to, the other campuses that went through this. It has become a bit of a trend among college campuses, certainly, and there are enough experiences out there that have shared their experiences with us to help us with that decision-making. I understand what you're saying, and trying to legislate to you that you shouldn't do something that you are doing, I understand that part. But that's the decision we went with, and it is to the betterment of those folks that had the health problems, I'll put it that way. And I will say, the campus is far better off in general, but it has, it does affect you very personally. It's more of the radio audience, the thousands of people that are listening on the radio.
Okay, I got it. It's mainly, a lot of us feel like you're taking away our freedom. I mean, we do pay a big chunk of money to be here, some of it is out of our own pockets, like myself. Like, I had to pay for all my own books this semester, and I do have a college fund that is paying for my college right now. I do not use financial aid at the moment, until I get a university somewhere, but it's, we come here and, you know, they, they teach us about individuality and, you know, speak what you want, and, you know, live your life the way that you want. But now that you have banned smoking, it is taking away our choice to smoke, you kind of take away our freedom, even though we are giving you guys all this money, which goes back into the school system, yes. I enjoy it. I am a great in music program right now, I'm a singer, granted, I smoke, don't judge me for that. But we really just want our freedom to smoke. We don't want to walk all the way out to our cars. You know, I smoke in the designated smoking areas, but I am guilty of smoking in the secret smoking areas, because there are some times that I don't have time to walk a mile and a half, you know, way back there, because all my classes are back here. Sometimes we don't have the chance to do that. And so what, what about that old bus stop that's in between CLB and the library?
It's actually going to be disappearing here in about two weeks. The, the bus people are taking that back and putting it somewhere else.
So I noticed that they don't.
Don't want?
They don't use it?
Right. It's not the bus stop anymore, yeah.
Oh, yeah, because they all come through Carlson Center. But I was saying that if you chose to gave us another smoking area, that'd be a great one to be at, because it's kind of in the middle of campus.
Well, to go back to my original point, though, then we wouldn't be a tobacco-free campus if we did that. But then, the Board of Trustees has ruled that we're going to be a tobacco-free campus.
I'm, I'm also a smoker. Are we actually a tobacco-free campus with the smoking huts on campus?
Yeah, that's.
That's kind of hypocritical, isn't it?
Well, you can choose to call it what you want. Again, that's how the policy is worded. It's a tobacco-free campus, except in the cars and the.
Then it's not truly tobacco-free, because it's still going on. How can you control something?
What's your point? We've already gone that direction. There is an exception for the, that smoking hut, yes, and in the cars.
It's not a tobacco-free campus, because people still smoke. And because they're being fined for it, they're having to flee to small, little congregation areas. If we could just legitimize those areas, we, we could just legitimize the areas where people already are smoking anyway, and then take it people who aren't smoking there, and take them for littering if they throw their butts on the ground, wouldn't that be a reasonable solution?
Solution to what?
To people being upset about not being able to smoke, to people being upset that people are smoking even though there aren't areas.
So you're saying that the smokers are upset? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Because when you say people.
It also looks really bad when you walk around and see a sign that says no smoking, and see someone three feet to the left of it smoking. So if we could have small designated areas.
I would agree totally, and I, again, my email is dday@jcc.edu, and I would love to know where those spots are. I will say that we just put a gate around one of them just the other day, so we're trying to find those locations.
We have one comment.
If you want to rat out your friends, go ahead, and we'll, we'll go for it.
Hi. I'm an employee here, and I'm also an asthmatic, so I'm not bothered by the smoke. But I also voted against the no smoking on campus, because I have a coworker that smokes. And I know that it's hard for everybody that, that smokes to make it to their cars and back. But it's also, you know, it is a rule, and I really try and, and tell people when they're smoking outside that they can get a fine. And a lot of people are very, very good about it, but there's also other people that, that they, they just keep on smoking anyway. And there's, there's some spots, and I'll tell you, because I know a lot of employees will call security when there's a big group of people smoking somewhere. But, but it is truly, for some of us, it's really hard when we have to walk by it if you have asthma. So I'm not, I'm not saying. I mean, I sympathize with you, because I understand that. But some people just don't care, and they continue on. And that, that's what bothers me a little bit, you know? And someone said something about employees and their secrets and their cares. And I have not yet found that to be the case. I don't know if they're, I haven't seen it, so.
Do you want a response to that? We want to move on to the next comment? Okay. There was one from a person who was not able to attend today, and they say that visitors to the Renee Center do smoke. Do they have a free pass because they're here for conferences?
No, not at all. It's anybody who comes on campus.
Okay, so we don't have special permissions for guests?
No, and in fact, I think there's notifications sent out to let people know that as well for programs that are done in the Renee Center. There are no designated spots over there for guests or anybody.
Okay.
Other than in their cars.
We have a few more people actually agreeing with the fact that it's supposed to be, it should be enforced more. And that comes from both smokers and non-smokers. They do want to see an absolute policy.
Yeah, I want to reemphasize what Dr. Grove said earlier. When we worked with the Student Senate over the course of two years, we did at least two surveys of students to make sure that this is the direction that students wanted to go and faculty-staff. In the Student Senate-sponsored surveys, it was, as Dr. Grove said, it was, I believe it was two to one in one survey, and three to one in the other, that there should be absolutely no smoking on campus, period. So we did make that exception to the parking lots, or the cars, and to the hut over at ITC. Other than that, I will say, from a health standpoint, and I know there are smokers in here from staff as well, it was a hardship for some people, and we understand that part. And that's why we try to give prior notice, and we offer smoking cessation classes. We also offer EAP for employees and SAP for students, if they want to get some counseling to, about change and about possibly changing their habits as well. So that's part of the process.
Last question. Are we fighting a losing battle?
Yes.
You keep talking about the people that have asthma, them not liking the smoking. What about your smokers that have to walk a mile in any direction to go to their car in the snow when it's negative three degrees? Do you not care about their health?
Oh, absolutely, and that's why we chose to go tobacco-free.
So instead, you make them walk all the way out to their car and risk them getting pneumonia and risk a pneumonia outbreak in your school, because instead of having a smoking section on campus, you are making them walk a mile in any direction to get to their car, to then smoke a cigarette, and then walk all the way back?
You're making this a supposition that smoking tobacco is good for your health.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying you're risking your entire student body getting pneumonia from so many people walking to their cars in the snow in negative temperatures.
If you want to go with that logic, smokers are more susceptible to pneumonia than non-smokers.
I can also go with the logic that you're just asking for a pneumonia outbreak.
No, actually, we're asking that people will not smoke on campus.
By making smokers go to their car, which is asking for an outbreak? Because people are gonna get sick, and then they're gonna pass it on, because they don't want to miss class. So instead of you guys making one extra smoking area, other than the ITC Building, you guys want us to go all the way to our cars and risk pneumonia, and risk an entire outbreak of pneumonia, instead of making one more exception?
That would be your opinion?
It's what you're making it sound like.
You seem to be making it sound like popular opinion is on the side of a completely tobacco-free campus. But last week, I stopped, I decided, upon your advice, to put it off until after this meeting, but I started just a sort of, I don't know if it's really fair to call it a petition, it was more of a poll, to see who would want to see smoking areas back on campus. I believe the wording was, I believe that the current JCCC, CCCC policy is both harmful and unnecessary, and I request the establishment of multiple designated smoking areas on campus. And within two days, I got 200 signatures. So a lot of people really are upset about it.
If you have so many designated. If you have so many smoking designated, designated, sorry, designated smoking areas, then it's not fair for the non-smokers, because what, you're getting rid of our freedom of choosing better for our health, that we're not able to have that freedom to go outside anywhere. We have to go up a flight of stairs and over all the time, just to avoid going outside and breathing in the smoke. and breathing in the smoke, and it's ridiculous. We're suffering too if you put it back on campus. There was so many before that you couldn't even enjoy walking outside at all because there were so many smokers everywhere, and as I agree with the smoking butts on the ground was ridiculous when there's like places to put those and they're like all around it, like they don't even care about it. So, I totally disagree with putting it back on campus because it's just ridiculous. I really enjoyed walking outside. It's been amazing to be able to walk outside. I've been here four years and never been able to do that, though, just recently, and it's really nice. So.
Sorry.
I wanted to comment on what you're saying. When you give a poll to see if people do want designated smoking areas, the majority of the people that are going to take the poll are smokers. So, yeah, I could see how you would get a lot of signatures and try to make that winning argument, but also, when the decision was made, it was for the majority. I do understand that people feel like their individual rights are infringed upon, but as a whole, what's better for the majority of the students? Unfortunately, smokers are the minority, and there's more people that prefer attending a smoke-free establishment. Actually, I know you all said you've done a lot of research. There are actually, and so have I, there are actually studies that show that people do prefer non-smoking campuses, and it raises the number of students that attend the institution. I was curious, just so everybody understands better, what other conclusions did you guys come up with while you were doing your research?
Well, I mean, it's interesting. You bring up excellent points there, I think, that, you know, you've got restaurants that ban sm- you've got cities that ban public smoking, you've got counties, you've got states. My own old home state of Indiana is moving in the direction of banning smoking statewide in all public places, and we're just talking about it here in just this little localized area. I think you're absolutely right. People like that. Dr. Day, how many students do we have enrolled this term on campus approximately?
Twenty thousand.
Okay.
And I haven't checked up on it again, but I did hear that the FDA was practicing that it was required to put images of what smoking causes for your health. I know there's European countries that do that. So, like I said, I understand that people feel like their individual rights are infringed upon, but it's kind of like the bandwagon is moving and you should jump on it because, I mean, the research and the patterns of what it does to people's health all around the world, we're all very familiar with it, so. And obviously, it's your choice if you want to smoke or not smoke, but like I said, when you view it as a whole and the majority, it is the better way to go. It is the better decision.
Yeah, you know, the freedom argument there, I mean, in any society, there have to be restrictions placed upon freedom in order for the majority, in order for everybody to be, to be safe and to be happy. And, I mean, the analogy, again, I go back to the speed limit, you know? I mean, that's an infringement upon my freedom for them to not allow me to drive as fast as I want to, and yet, it's the safe thing to do, and it also conserves energy.
I'd just throw one other thing that we found out. Part of the transition that happens on campuses when you go this direction is, from the research, it does take about two years to change the culture of the institution itself because we are talking about folks that are forced into a situation, in many cases, to a direction that they don't necessarily want to go. So, it does take a little while for the culture of the institution to change to that and to understand not only the enforcement part, but also the pressure that is from the other parts of the campus as well, and understand that this is the direction the institution has gone, and rolling it back is probably not going to be a direction that that institution or other institutions will go, based on the same decisions that they made to go that certain direction. So, just to help you out with that, it's not that your voice is not heard. We hear the voice, but it is in the minority, and we are going toward the safety and health reasons as opposed to any other reasons.
We did have a co- oh, we have a comment? Okay.
There's a lot being said about this smoking and nonsmoking. I don't think it's fair. I don't think that it's, the board's being considerate, and I don't think that faculty is being considerate, and I don't think administration's being considerate. If you don't want people smoking and you got a smoking ban, then why don't you say, "Don't apply, don't come out here to apply for, to be in a student." You want to smoke? Go to another college. Also, we get state money, taxes from cigarettes. Colleges don't talk about that, but you take the money from the cigarettes and you spend it. You justify it. You say you have a need. The people in here are just asking for some smoking huts. You want to tell me what's bad for my health? Eating food is bad for my health. The attitudes that they put in food, most of them we shouldn't even ingest, but it doesn't stop us from eating. You're going to say that smoking is bad for my health, it can cause asthma? I'm a diabetic. You sell sugar. You have no qualms about it. I'm exposed to it every day. So, I'm just saying, be fair-minded. Don't be heavy-handed. Be fair-minded. Build a couple of huts so people don't have to slip clear across campus to smoke. You're teaching, this is a facility and institution of education. You're teaching young minds and forming young minds to be objective, but then you come out with this smoking ban, and you hide behind the excuse of, "The board said it's okay. We can push this." No. Be objective with it. Be fair-minded with it. Just bring in some little smoking areas for the people who do smoke, and let it be.
Well, yeah, first of all, Margaret, you know, what I said before is that our Board of Trustees has agreed to make this a tobacco-free campus, and we can't do that and make allowances to smokers, first of all. Second of all, I am not aware that we're taking money from cigarette taxes. We take money from property taxes. We take money from taxes that of cars that are sold in this county, but I am not at all aware that we take money from cigarettes. So, I think that that's an absolutely wrong statement for you to make.
Then what are you going to say?
Why don't you supply me with the evidence first, okay? It's not my business to go out and check it.
You mentioned that you had done some studies or looked at some other institutions. Could you maybe elaborate on some of those? For example, I know that on the Missouri side, pardon me, but UMKC, University of Central Missouri, and also Metropolitan College Districts are all tobacco-free, and I just had wondered if you'd maybe elaborate if you could.
Well, OZR Technical Community College down in Springfield, Missouri was one of the first in the country to go that direction. Then Iowa, University of Iowa went to a restricted policy. So, we looked at some of those case studies. There's a gentleman that was at OTCC. He's retired, and this is what he does now. He works on nonsmoking transformations, and he provided a lot of information from those institutions.
I guess the point I just want to make is that Margaret back there said that, you know, it's one thing to tell somebody, you know, what is wrong or right for their health, but the problem with cigarettes is that since it pollutes an atmosphere around you, you're harming other people's health without their, like, their choice of the matter. If you are getting pneumonia by walking to your car to smoke, that's not something that you have to do. That's a decision you're making, so you are, you know, you are then taking, you know, your own health into consideration on your own accord.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And the last time I checked, which was a while back, cigarette packages said that the Surgeon General has determined, period, end of story there. It's not on cans of cola, it's not on hamburgers, it's on packages of cigarettes.
I understand the concern that you don't want to go out and smell smoke. I am kind of skeptical as to whether or not secondhand smoke is going to give you cancer and kill you. I rode my bicycle to California, smoking, chain-smoking the whole way. I feel like I'm in pretty good health, but I guess where I was going with this is, a lot of people have allergies and a lot of people have asthma, but if they started complaining to you about grass, would you cover it all up with cement and cut down the trees? Or if people complained about gum being on the ground, people littering their gum, would you ban chewing gum in school?
Well, now that you bring up chewing gum.
Brought people to their feet.
To that, I'd say, "The Surgeon General has determined."
I think you've got a response to the secondhand smoke stuff.
I'm the Director of Respiratory Care here at the college, so I encourage you to come and visit anytime if you'd like to see all the statistics that we have on how it affects your health. Secondhand smoke is actually a bigger killer right now than firsthand smoke, and that has to do with the physiology of how that affects your body, so I can speak to that anytime you'd like to have that information. I've been on campus for about two and a half years, and much like the young lady that stood up, I just recently enjoyed going outside during the day and walking through the middle of the plaza that used to be a smoking area and not having to smell the smoke. I'm an asthmatic. Most of the students in my class have some kind of a respiratory issue. I do have some smokers that are respiratory care students, but they understand why this is necessary. I read in class this morning a statement from St. Luke's Hospitals that said, "Do not apply for a job in our institution if you are a smoker, and if it's found out that you are a smoker, you will be immediately terminated." So, we're heading that way, and I really like to commend you and the board for making that decision.
We have two more comments about that, and then I'll get to you.
I think we can all agree that JCCC is a phenomenal establishment for higher education, and my question to the smokers is, do you think that everything that we're known for, do you think it looks professional when visitors come to our campus and there's cigarette buds and cigarette packages all over? Because, I mean, people aren't necessarily, they obviously didn't care and just threw everything all over, so I really think that being a tobacco-free campus also really shapes a professional learning environment that this really is, and I think we can all agree that it is a great establishment.
As you're moving from one to the other, I'd want to defend some smokers. There were some smokers that were very compliant, that were very fastidious with the remains, so it wasn't all smokers, but that was part of the problem was that there were enough of the smokers that broke out and did not pay attention to those regulations and rules, and that's why we do not have smoking huts on campus today, because they would not stay within that confinement.
We had one more comment.
And we had fifteen places.
I would just like to make a statement. I wasn't originally planning on talking, but you mentioned that secondhand smoke shouldn't be an issue. My grandma never smoked a day in her life. Her cause of death was emphysema because her son, who lived with her, smoked three packs a day. So, I really, really disagree with smoking doesn't harm other people. I have asthma. It triggers my asthma. It makes me very ill. I grew up in a house of smokers. I never complained about it growing up. I just suffered, and I'm at a point in my life where I'm adult, I don't want to suffer anymore. I want to be healthy. I want to be able to breathe without wheezing.
I wasn't going to talk either, but my position has been, I smoked for thirty years, okay, till I had a heart attack, and that kind of made me think twice. And I'm not even going to try to talk you out of smoking because I knew full well from all my doctors and everybody else. And also, I've read enough studies to know that when you approach it that way, people don't listen. If anything, as a young person, you'll probably want to rebel and smoke more. Those are kind of just the facts. It's kind of, it's too bad that two young women left because one was talking about they're giving up their freedom, and that becomes an offset because it is about the freedom. She has the choice to smoke or not, but somebody who has asthma or another disease doesn't. We may have sugar on campus, but nobody's forcing you to eat that, I'm assuming, and by the very fact that we advertise as a non-smoking campus, they don't have to come here. So, I mean, those issues are kind of just as they are. We tried the restricted areas at one time. That didn't work. I'm sympathetic to the smokers because I understand where you've been, and I understand the urge, and I also understand the inconvenience, and I feel sorry for people who have to walk out to the, to the cars. I really do. I'm sympathetic to that because I know that, that it really isn't a habit, it's an addiction, and so I understand that urge and to do that sort of thing. For me, it comes down to what's been, at this point, what's been stated in terms of the enforcement, which is very, very difficult because I know we can't blanket the campus with the police. It's very, very difficult. I also think that it is difficult that when you have a non-smoking policy, and in the ATB, there's, it's not a hidden place, it's around the doors, and the colder it gets, the closer to the doors they get, and the evidence is on the ground all over the place on both, on all three entrances of the ATB. And my faculty have complained because we kind of don't know where we stand. We've actually asked some people in as nice a way as we can, "Please don't smoke here." And I've been met with everything from, "I don't know what you're talking about," to, "Hey, I pay tuition, I can do anything I want," to a litany of basically being pretty rude to people who have tried to, you know, actually suggest that they keep the law. So, I'm, it's almost a stalemate issue, and it comes down to enforcement to me that we just somehow have to figure out how to do that. Otherwise, it really does, there's no reason to have it because people are smoking anyway. It's pretty blatant in a lot of, in a lot of places.
Do you have a comment? No? We did have a few more comments from people who could not, were not able to attend, and some of those comments were of enforcing the ban, some others. There was one in specific that said, it was from a nonsmoker, and she also mentioned enjoying walking without having all the smoke, and she said that smokers can't control which way the wind blows, and nonsmokers and those with health problems should not suffer for the right of those, a few that pose on their bodies. I just think I should mention that. Are there any other comments that would like to be heard?
Hey, Gina, it might be good if you sort of told people what the impetus for the meeting was and why Student Senate chose to do this, and then if you would elaborate on the other side, you will go to the Board of Trustees and you will let them know what happened here.
The reason why we decided to hold this meeting is because we had really strong opinions from either side. We really had smokers that did not understand, and there were people who were returning to the school after a few years, and they just found themselves with a smoking ban, and they just didn't realize why that was going on, and then we had the nonsmokers that were totally supportive and wanted to see not a single cigarette on the ground and didn't want to smoke at all. So, we decided to hold a town hall and let you know about why the smoking ban took place and ask you, help you ask the questions that you want to ask and clarify anything that you would like in terms of the policy or in terms of why this happened and how it all started. It was actually initiated by the students, and I just, I just wanted to let everybody get informed about it. We're not making a decision today, and I think pretty much the smoking ban is done and said and done, but I just want you to know why this takes place because as students paying on this campus and being on this campus, you have the right to know why policies take place and how they start, and how does that affect you as an individual?
Just out of curiosity, simply because I'm new here, this is my first semester here, I am roughly a three-quarter-pack-a-day smoker. Honestly, I do agree with the going out, you know, going out to your car every time you want to have a cigarette. You know, if you're here for a couple hours a day, that's one thing. If you're here all day and you only get a small amount of time between classes to go and have that little sinful moment, one, it does make it a little tough. It's not un- One, it does make it a little tough. It's not unreasonable. It's inconvenient. That's simply my opinion. But my question is, is there at any point going to be a possible revote or repull or possibly somehow, some way that the student body who is, who does smoke and those who do want our smoking rights back? Is there ever going to be a chance for us to possibly try to claim that back?
I think that, you know, like, in any kind of organization, any rule you made can always be changed down the road. I don't foresee that happening. Again, this is not a vote, you know? I mean, it's a vote on the, part of the Board of Trustees, but this is not a vote of the students or the faculty or the staff here. And they decided to go tobacco-free in June. And as Dr. Day was saying, you know, all the studies indicate, you got to at least give this two years. So in the near future, no. I just don't foresee it. I could be wrong. It's not my choice. I can only make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
I think you have to look at the trends too and some of the information you've heard just from health organizations. It's trending that way. And it's going to get more restrictive rather than less restrictive. Now, will that change in five years? Might. But I just don't see that trend changing in the next two to three to four years. So are campuses going more smoke-free? Yes. There's probably over 200 campuses now. Inside of a year, there's probably going to be 500 to 600. So that's the trend that it's going to. What I'm trying to give you is a long-term answer. Would you fight an uphill battle? Absolutely. I think something would have to change within the smoking process itself. Electronic cigarettes are one way of trying to do that, even though states have already taken that in consideration and included that as a smoking device. Even though it's supposedly smokeless, but they're using that. But something like that would have to change to significantly change that type of, of trend within policymaking.
I might have time for one more comment. I just wanted to say about the Board of Trustees that we will report what exactly went on today in the discussions. The Student Senate does not take a position at this point. But we definitely do put on both opinions and on both extremes. And we had two comments and then we'll, and there's an act back.
I kind of want to get a clarification or, I think it might have been stated, but I don't know whether I caught it correctly. If I'm not mistaken, this was a Student Senate initiation to begin with, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right. The last two years.
So kind of in, to your question is, if you bring it back to the Student Senate and you have enough clout, you could certainly revisit the question. In terms of your petition, 200 out of 20,000, it's pretty small. But I think if you, if you held it, yeah, I was going to say, if you held it and you didn't go out just asking smokers, but you ask everybody to sign these things, then you go to the Student Senate, then you have your avenue. And part of your avenue is the Student Senate. So take the voting or you're voting for your representatives pretty seriously because this is where this comes from. They could take it back to the Board and then the Board can decide that. This wasn't like mandated, at least after the law, this wasn't mandated by the Board on their own from, if I'm, if I got that correct. This was taken to the Board by the Student Senate.
Well, yeah, and the administration also made that recommendation, myself included.
Any other questions?
It is illegal. And the state statute has that in it.
All right. Well, thank you all for coming. I hope that your opinion was heard. If not, we can always receive more comments and you can always contact anyone you would like about questions and concerns. You're more, I know, I don't want to hold you more because we said this was going to be from 12 to 1. So thank you again for attending and you can have a snack on your way out. And I would be more than welcome to talk to you as well. Thank you.